Will everyone rise please for a moment of silence for Mr. Trent Jackson, a former teacher who passed away, and also for the falling at the Virginia Tech tragedy in Virginia. Commissioner Powell will lead the pledge of allegiance after the moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Evans just called and said he's on his way, but regrettably, we're going to have to start without him. Everyone has received the minutes of the last meeting with your mailings. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes, please.
Second.
We've properly moved on second. I'll then any corrections to those minutes. There'll be none or hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to proceed with speakers addressing an agenda item. The rules for speakers is very clear. You have three minutes to please state your concern, and then our time clock will ring, and we just ask you to conclude at that time and give the rest of the people an opportunity to have their chance. Our bylaw states that we should not be here listening to speakers for more than one hour. However, we have never enforced the bylaw, so if you stick to your three minutes, we should do okay. Speaker on an agenda item, we have Mr. Dan DiClemente on the interim superintendent. Mr. DiClemente.
On behalf of the members of Bente Asmi Local 2419, we extend our congratulations to Mr. William Calla as the new interim superintendent of schools, and it is our hope that he will continue the tradition of working in collaboration with unions to the benefit of the students, the staff, and the entire community. My name is Dan DiClemente, and I represent the 1,443 support staff workers that Commissioner Elliott publicly referred to as selfish, greedy, irresponsible suburbanites at the March 28th board meeting when she voted absolutely no on the Bente contract. Selfish because a food service worker with two kids making $7.56 an hour has the audacity to ask this board to raise her annual income to $6,000 or $9,000 less than the stipend that Commissioner Elliott is getting from taxpayers like her. Greedy because a cleaner with grandchildren who attend city schools would like to increase his income a whopping $6.40 a week. Irresponsible because a workforce who feeds, cleans, protects, transports, supports, and supplies children with a safe learning environment has the gall to ask for a raise that will be swallowed whole by the rising cost of gas or bus fare for their daily commute. In the 16 months that Commissioner Elliott has served on this board, I've watched her deny positive workplace training for Bente members provided by Roots, go out of her way to say absolutely no to our contract, vote down hirings, promotions, and leaves of absences, degrade clerical staff and editorials, and make statements that are completely void of any facts, substance, or reality, all in the name of children. Three-quarters of our members live in the city, yet she ventures to say that many of them don't, and all of us spend money to support businesses in this community. I've lived in the city while working as a dishwasher in Greece, and I've lived in Greece and worked as a cleaner at Jefferson, and if it's one thing I've learned, when it comes to mopping floors and cleaning toilets, we all use the same chemicals. Our membership, our membership would like to thank President Garcia, Vice President Evans, Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Brennan, and Commissioner White for recognizing that the raises and benefits that they approve for Bente members keep more families out of poverty and less children in despair. By voting yes on our contract, you clearly understand and appreciate that our members perform vital services that are vital to the success of students and the overall operation of the schools. One cannot claim to support children without supporting the mothers that gave birth to them, without admiring the adults that shaped their lives, the workers who make sure that they're fed, that they're brought to school safe, that they're greeted with a smile in the morning and taught to be respectful of everyone, no matter what they do, or how they look, or where they come from. And if respecting your elders is a principle that the district wishes to instill in these students, then it begins with this board being respectful of the employees who work in the environment they learn in. In conclusion, raising the standard of living for Bente members supports working families, and believe it or not, that includes children. And if Commissioner Elliott is not willing to set the example and realize that without our workforce, this district wouldn't even be able to tie its own shoes, then the 75% of our members who do happen to live in the city, when they are asked to come out and support her reelection in 2009, will vote the same way that she voted when she was asked to support them. Absolutely no. Thank you for your time.
Can't we just savor the moment for one more? I said, Mr. President, can't we just savor the moment for one more?
However, just before he gives the report, I'm going to have Commissioner Evans help me present a plaque as a token of appreciation from the board to Dr. Manuel Rivera for his years of service to Rochester School District, and Commissioner Evans is going to read why we think he deserves this plaque.
If my commissioners could stop down to the podium. The superintendent may not look like it, but he's been around in education for, I think, close to 30 years, and this is his last official board meeting. He'll be leaving the hallowed halls of Central Office to join the big dogs in the state capital. And we want to thank you for your years of service, just not as superintendent, but your years as a teacher, as a principal, and as an administrator within this district. Under your leadership, we've seen major gains in student achievement, especially at the elementary level. More students from all ethnic groups scoring higher on the New York State test. More high school students are passing their region's exams. More elementary school students are meeting annual targets for improvement in English and math. You helped restructure and design and to improve graduation rates and prepare students for college and success. You sought and attained support for the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation in the form of a $5 million grant to support the establishment of the small career-focused schools within larger schools in partnerships with colleges that allow schools and students to earn college credit. Proposed strengthened the district's financial management practices and fiscal integrity and enlisted external stakeholders to review our financial practices and established an office of internal controls. And led the charge to seek support from the New York State Legislature for the district's facilities modernization program designed to give students access to the modern instructional resources and facilities that are equipped for the 21st century. One of the things I think we all really want to thank you for was helping us complete the district's strategic plan, which is driving our budget process and will drive this district for years to come. We want to thank you for your service to Rochester and the district, and don't forget about us when you're down in Albany, and we know that although you still have a week left of work, we know that you still have some things to tie up, and we look forward to sharing that last week with you and wish you future success in your future endeavors. Thank you so much for your service. And the plaque, the plaque reads, "Presented to Manuel J. Rivera in grateful recognition of your 30 years of dedication to the children, staff, and community of the Rochester City School District, April 19, 2007, Rochester City School District Board of Education, Domingo Garcia, President, Malik Evans, Vice President, Commissioner Cynthia Elliott, Willa Powell, Shirley Thompson, and Van Henry White." Thank you so much.
I suppose I'll give my report now. First of all, I really, I want to thank the Board of Education for your support. It is not very often that you have an opportunity to come back for a second time as school superintendent, to come back and bring some of what you've learned and some more experience to be able to try to do the right thing. But when I came back here in '02, I came back here with one mission, and that was to do what's right for children. And I've always tried to let that guide every single thing that I do when making decisions. What's the best thing to do here for children? And I will tell you that the progress that we've made as a school district was not one person alone. All of you who are out there working in our schools, those of you in the faith community who've supported our children and families, parents, the support staff in our schools, our administrators, my team, who have worked countless hours. A lot of you don't see their cars, but they're here late at night and on weekends. Our principals, our teachers, everybody has played a role in coming together as part of a family, and I think that is what has contributed in so many ways to the gains that we in fact have realized in a number of our schools. The gains that we have shown in our elementary schools are indisputable. Thirty-seven of our 39 schools have demonstrated progress. We've seen hundreds more kids, hundreds more children meeting standards in math and English language arts, better prepared when they enter 7th grade. We will crack, we will be first and foremost to lead this state in terms of improved graduation rates. I'm certain about that. It's a matter of people continuing to work together, to work collaboratively, to advance and do the right thing for children. I also want to thank a number of partners, colleges and universities, but also our union partners. Dan DiClemente, Adam Urbansky, Marge Brumfield, Vicki Gouvia, these are people who, although they represent employee groups, have worked with me. We have worked together, and I can't thank you enough, because that's what it takes. You've got to have labor and management working together. You've got to have a community that works together. You have to have a city that works with the city school district, a county that supports our children and families, and that's how we'll get good results and continue to achieve good results in our community. So I want to thank all of you. I want to thank the board for your years of support, and I will miss you. This is my final board meeting, but I will certainly look to keeping in touch with you. I guess I do have a few other items. Let me, first of all, I do want to recognize, I've tried to do this as often as I can at our school board meetings, a number of schools and individuals who have been with us and are doing special things. I want to congratulate Michelle Hancock. Michelle has been selected to receive the Maxine Gladekob Award from the New York State Association for Women in Administration. It's an award, it's a very prestigious award. It's given annually to recognize those who demonstrate exceptional work with children from diverse populations. If you haven't had a chance, on the second floor, School 25 today unveiled the results of its interdisciplinary learning project. Wild about reading, couldn't think of a better project. So anyone here from School 25, congratulations, and I think it's a terrific effort, and folks who want to visit the second floor at some point can look at some of the work that they have put together. School of the Arts brought home several top awards after performing at the Heritage Music Festival in Washington, D.C. last month. The Wind Ensemble, Senior Jazz Ensemble, 9th and 10th Grade Jazz Band and Concert Choir all received gold awards, the highest possible honor. The Symphony and Chamber Orchestra each earned a silver award, and the concert band earned a bronze. The school also won the instrumental sweepstakes award given to the school that receives the highest combined scores of all its bands. Congratulations to SOTA for once again representing the district to the highest standards. And just a couple of announcements. The Parent Partnership Council is hosting two community meetings next week, curbing the violence of gangs, Tuesday, April 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Wilson Magnet High School, the Foundation Academy, 200 Genesee Street. A second event, what every parent should know about special education, Thursday, April 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the district central office. And I want to thank Carol Lee Albert, Angie Butler, two parent leaders who I have worked closely with, for your support as well and your continued support for children and parents in our community. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a question for Dr. Rivera.
Yes.
It's not on any of the items presented. We are in the middle of kindergarten registration under the choice program, and as we as a board have talked before, the economic information on the families that are registered last year was not supplied. I just wanted some affirmation that that situation is corrected this year, that we're collecting either a school free lunch form or some other documentation to represent the economic indicators for each family as they're registering. Is there someone?
Sure. Mike, do you have a response for that?
Sorry, I was a hallway in the back.
I know. It's long block.
Yes, we have included that in our process this year. We're collecting the information as families register. If the family already has students that are enrolled in the free or reduced lunch, that will be considered. If they are new to the district, there is a form that they will complete. We will take the information that we are submitted as verified and validated, and that will then be a criteria in the selection process, and that will be weighted in the lottery.
Any other questions for Dr. Rivera? Well, thank you, Dr. Rivera, for your report, and then we'll move on then to board reports. Our first report will be from Mr. Evans, our student representative. Mr. Evans?
First and foremost, the student leadership Congress, along with myself, would like to thank Dr. Rivera for his many years of service to us in the district. Student leadership Congress did not meet this month due to conflicting times between our members. We will meet next month for our monthly business meeting. We completed our public service announcements in March. They are now on air on the public service channels. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Commissioner Brennan?
The Policy Committee will meet on April 25th. At the moment, the agenda in its entirety is unclear. That will be established very soon, and we'll be in communication with everybody about that. Also, I want to apologize to the group for my excess of formality tonight. I was enjoying answering the call of spring or summer, and there was a transportation glitch. I've taken Jim Bauer's seat on the board, and it looks like I've stolen his clothes, too.
Some alligator shoe.
But I don't want to in any way convey any disrespect. Now, I also want to just say, it's customary in these reports when people who have cooperated and worked with the committee, with a particular committee of the board, that they be acknowledged when they're departing, and I want to acknowledge an extraordinarily competent and gracious and helpful member of our staff, Shanay Lee, who will be moving on to the finance department. She has provided wonderful service to us over the course of the past year, and I wanted to acknowledge that. Somebody else who has been helpful not only to the policy committee but to the district entirely is someone we've already mentioned here tonight, and that is our departing superintendent, Dr. Rivera. When Rob Brown left the board, he made a reference to board members suffering the slings and arrows of outrageous constituents. Dr. Rivera has with extraordinary, for my money, extraordinary grace and patience and good humor suffered the slings and arrows of outrageous board members, myself included on occasion. And I want to acknowledge that. The fact of the matter is, when you take the rhetoric and the politics and the cheap shots that have been directed his way, the vast majority of this community understands that an awful lot of kids in this community will have better opportunities in their lives because he worked in this district. And that is better than any press, any mayoral endorsement, or any other politics that sometimes attends his work. And Governor Spitzer knew talent when he saw it. It's our loss and his gain, and I just want to thank him personally and wish him well.
Thank you, Tom.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brennan. Commissioner Evans?
Brief report, the community and intergovernmental relationships.
The Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee met on April 4th to review the draft legislation for the Facilities Modernization Program. The legislation has been submitted, and we are optimistic that the legislation will be introduced before the session closes in mid-June. We will meet Monday, April 23rd, to hear an update on the Rochester Children's Zone, as well as the activities of the Parent Partnership Council. As you know, as committee chair, I instituted a quarterly meeting to get an update from the Parent Partnership Council, which has been very instructive to the committee, and we'll continue to do that going forward. Everyone is welcome to attend that Monday meeting, April 23rd, and I believe it's at 5:30. Six o'clock in this room. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Yes, there's a great deal of activity in the Finance Committee this month. Most of it is represented in the packet. There were 11 facilities resolutions that represent final payments. There are eight resolutions that represent a large number of contracts for our next annual capital improvement cycle. They represent a great deal of resources this going into our building season. We also covered some technology contracts and procurement contract renewals. All of them are in the packet. The Finance Committee recommends approval for all of them. We do have the monthly reports and the quarterly Student Activities Fund reports that need to be accepted by the board. The committee does recommend approval of those. If I might move that the board accept the monthly financial reports?
Second. We moved on second, that the board accepts the monthly financial report. Any questions related to that? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the report, please say aye.
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 Mr. Evans?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
And as a second motion, the Student Activity Report?
Second. It has been moved on second, that the board accepts the Student Activity Report. Any questions? Hearing none, then we will proceed to vote. Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Everyone else, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, the ayes have it.
Okay. The, one thing I would draw your attention to, in the capital improvement project resolutions and contracts, there are a couple of examples of intergovernmental cooperation. There are some contracts going out to do work on the Baden Street Centers, which are city-owned facilities. But by, by working with the city school district, the city enjoys the benefit of our state aid reimbursement. So, you'll find that on Resolution 662 in particular. Because our Baden, because our school number nine uses the Baden Street Rec Center for its gym and physical ed programs, we're able to capitalize on partnerships with the city. So, don't let it be said that we don't work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Thompson?
The Quality Assurance Committee met on Monday, April 16th. Our agenda included discussion of the Diversity Initiative, Culture Change, Human Resources Report, the African and African American Studies Department, New York State's new accountability reporting system, and an update regarding the challenges faced by students with alternative lifestyles. On behalf of QA, I also sent a third reminder to the superintendent that we have not been satisfied with answers received to queries regarding notification of military recruiting in schools, textbook allocation, and the living contract with ASAR and RTA. The information on textbooks has since been received. The committee learned that New York State is retroactively instituting new accountability measures regarding the calculation of graduation rates. These new measures are expected to lower our already unacceptable graduation rate by more than a dozen percentage points. It does this by counting all students who are with us for five months, regardless of why they leave, as our students until they spend at least five months in another district. In other words, if a student attends Rochester City School District from September through January, then February in Greece, March in Arundacoit, and April through June, and even an out-of-state district, that student is still counted as ours, and one of ours who did not graduate. This change is particularly damning for urban districts with a high degree of mobility. QA will work with Community and Intergovernmental Relations to see whether these new regulations can be addressed in Albany. The African and African American Studies Department, following board approval of the 2007-08 budget, expects to have a director in place by the end of May. Planning for how the department will implement a standards-based instructional program that's responsive and reflective of African and African American cultural traditions, practices, and experiences will take place from July through October. Pilot projects expect to be implemented in designated schools beginning in November. QA is examining how students who have alternative lifestyles are treated by fellow students and staff members in our secondary schools. In lieu of a planned student survey, administrators will use data from the Olwas Bullying Survey that was completed in March and is done annually. The Gay, Lesbian, and Straight Education Network, GLISSON, is working with our staff on this report, and follow-through that will be needed in terms of professional development and education will occur. QA members continue to have questions regarding the hiring of African Americans and others of color. Although teacher retention rates, based on information that was shared on Monday, retention rates regarding African American and others of color are comparable to retention rates of Caucasians, QA also wants to know how many candidates of color apply and are not hired compared to how many Caucasians apply and are not hired. QA members and other commissioners hear regularly from people of color who apply to the district and are not hired, and we believe this is something the board should be looking into also. We also discussed our administrative liaisons to QA. Two of us concur that the committee's broadened scope merits a liaison with a more global district view, specifically Chief of Staff Dr. Kim Dice-Fossett. And this particular discussion was temporarily tabled. And we will meet again on Monday, May 7th, at 6:00 PM. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson, and Commissioner White.
Good evening. Apologize for the phone. The Audit Committee met on April 4th to discuss the RTA grievance process, the whistleblower policy, financial expert appointment to the committee, a proposed meeting schedule, and staffing for the claims auditor. At the meeting, the committee agreed that the temporary personnel should be added to the claims auditor staff to support the PeopleSoft 8.9 Upgrade Project. The committee also recommended that the board seek the advice of outside counsel on the interpretation of language of the current RTA contract that presents the grievance procedure. The committee seeks a motion at this time to obtain the advice of outside counsel on the interpretation of the RTA contract language related to the grievance procedure.
Second. It's been moved on second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
The ayes have it.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. We then now continue with our consideration of resolutions, and I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 627 through 649. These are human resources resolutions.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And, second by Commissioner Powell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 650 through 669. These are educational facilities resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved, properly moved on second. Any questions regarding these resolutions? There being hearing none. Mr. Evans, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rest of the commissioners, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 677 through 682.
It's a moved.
It's been properly moved on second. Any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Evans, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rest of the commissioners, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it.
Point of order.
Point of order, Commissioner Thompson.
President Garcia, did we combine two sections, or did we skip 70 through 76?
Yeah, I think we skipped, yeah. Got to go back to 670, 676.
I'll have to go back to 670 through 676. I did skip it. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 670 through 676. These are budget information technology resolutions.
So moved.
It's been moved on second. Any questions?
The only comment I'll make, Mr. President, is that kudos to the, you know, we have these long Finance Committee meetings that last about four hours. Kudos to the staff and the departments working together to bring costs down, particularly relating around Resolution 670. Those are the types of things that we need to continue to do, and it's good work, and I think we can continue with those types of things.
And if I could tag to that, we wouldn't be able to do some of the work that helps reduce costs if we hadn't had the cooperation of the Bente Unions agreeing to some of the healthcare provisions of the contract. So, it's a win-win.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Thank you. With the board's indulgence, we are going to go through Resolution 683 to 696. And we're going to vote on Resolution 697 separately.
Right.
Oh, oh, thank you for reminding me. I have to go back, and I let the record show that I have to abstain from Resolution 637 because of a family member is mentioning that resolution. She's a schoolteacher. We have to go through Resolution 683 through 696. We'll vote on Resolution 697 separately. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 683.
Could we separate 696 as well? It's very simple and painless, but...
We'll, then, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 683 through 695.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved on second. Any question? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The resolution passes. We'll then vote on, entertain a motion to approve Resolution 696.
And, Mr. President, I move, I move that resolution.
It's been moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved on second by Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Powell?
I only asked to have it separated, to call attention for the, to the audience, that this resolution calls for a change of our monthly business meeting from the 3rd Thursday of each month to the 4th. I think that's a piece of information that should not go unspoken to, because it does affect our calendar. It will begin at the beginning of the school year in September.
Thank you. Any, any other question, Resolution 696? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We now vote, we'll vote on, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 697. Resolution 697 is the resolution that will appoint Dr. William Cala to be interim superintendent of schools. So, I'll entertain a motion for approval of Resolution 697.
So moved.
Tom beat you to it.
It's been moved on second by Commissioner Evans and Powell. I don't know which one did what, but they both did it.
We'll give credit to Tom Brennan. Oh, no, no. He just wasn't loud enough.
Okay.
That's what I get for mumbling.
After we vote on this resolution, I'm going to allow Mr. Dr. Cala to say a few words. All in favor of approving Resolution 697, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Unanimous vote for Dr. William Cala to become our interim superintendent. Dr. Cala, is your family here?
I truly appreciate your support. There really aren't enough words to express what I feel right now. I was born and raised in Rochester, as many of you well know, and this is really a homecoming in many, many ways. Today, I spent quite a bit of time at School 45, and School 45 holds a special spot in my heart. I went with the principal to the back window and looked out the window with Vicky Gouvia, and I pointed to a very, very large tree that sits on the border of the backyard of School 45. It's the largest tree in the neighborhood by far. And I told her that I planted that tree when I was 10 years old. It was a tree that Louis, the bus driver, gave to me, that he brought from Massachusetts. And it was, it was a willow tree, which are, are very messy and big and huge. And we, I stuck it in the ground, and we couldn't kill that thing for, for anything. And there it sits today. I could not believe when I saw that thing today. And there's, there's some symbolism in there, and I'm not quite sure what it is, but there is some symbolism about how life goes on and grows in spite of diversity. So, adversity, excuse me.
That's what I thought he said.
Adversity. And...
Getting off to a good start.
I was just, I was just making a comment on the way up here. I said, you know, the tuna I had tonight really worked because I remembered everyone's name as I came in here. You just have to make a mistake sooner or later. Sooner rather than later. I am very, very pleased to be here, and I hope that the, in the time that I'm here, I'm able to fulfill the mission that the board has set forth, and that, most importantly, most importantly, that whatever I do is for the benefit of all children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Cala. I was very pleased to have you be our interim superintendent, definitely. We'll move on then to unfinished business from previous meeting. I don't think that we have any. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next speakers. No new business, any new business?
Yes, President.
Commissioner White?
Thank you, President Garcia. I'll be as brief as I can be. There's been much discussion in this community about graduation rates. We've heard that conversation as far away as in Albany and as close as 30 Church Street. The conversation about graduation rates has reminded me of a conversation that Bill Clinton had when he first ran for office. He reminded people that no matter what they said or did, ultimately, it was going to be the economy that was going to define his legacy and the legacy of his colleagues. He used the phrase, "It's the economy, stupid." Whether we like it or not, whether we think it's fair or not, we will be judged on our success or failure on whether we improve our graduation rates. And this is a fair assessment of our work. Every year, our children are judged in this manner. Come May or June, many of our high school seniors are asked, and I quote, "Are you graduating this year?" Depending on the answer, great joy and sometimes great disappointment follows... Depending on the answer, great joy and sometimes great disappointment follows the reply. All too frequently, our seniors are saying no, and their eyes reveal a diminishing level of hope and an overwhelming sense of disappointment. We have a responsibility and the ability to change this. In the past, if the past is any indicator, only 52% of our children will graduate from high school within four years. That is shameful and unacceptable. Presently, we have the technology to track and get real-time data on where our high school students are and their journey to participate in commencement exercises. I have learned, and I must give thanks to the superintendent and Kim Dice Fawcett for providing me information that I think will critically lay the path for us to change our graduation rates this year. I understand that each of my colleagues have been provided data, not only for the schools that I'm assigned to as board liaison, but the schools that they are assigned to, and that information is instructive. For example, at Global Media Arts at Franklin, forty-nine of the sixty-four seniors, let me repeat that, forty-nine of the sixty-four seniors at Global Media are at risk of not graduating this year. Thirteen of the fifty-nine seniors at Bioscience at the Franklin complex, a school that I am liaisoned to, are also at risk of not graduating this year because they have less than a C in a core subject course. Nine of the sixty-one seniors at International Finance and Economic Development Career Center at Franklin are at risk also of not graduating. When taken together, a total of four hundred and ninety-four seniors are at risk of not graduating because they do not possess a C in a core course. Now, initially, I heard your size. You said, "Oh, my goodness," when you heard the numbers at Global Media. But when you put this in its perspective, it's not an insurmountable problem. We just have to focus our attention on the kids who are at risk. In total, we have 1,564 seniors who are supposed to graduate. Only, only 494 are at risk. Surely, we have the resource, the inspiration, the talent, the ability to help these 494 cross the commencement stage. How do we do that? Enough talk about graduating. We need to have a plan. And I respectfully submit to the superintendent the following plan. Allow, first, central office staff to be on loan to assist these 494 students. Presently, there are 68 certificated employees who work within central office. Additionally, there are 450 full-time employees, including board members, who work in central office. Collectively, these employees have hundreds of hours of experience in working with our children. Even though they, on a day-to-day basis, have less day-to-day contact with our kids, their commitment to seeing our kids succeed is not any less than anybody working in the schools. I believe this because I've worked with these people in the last two months. Additionally, I think there is an opportunity to have the community get involved with these 494 students. With just 66 days to graduation, there are principals, teachers, paraprofessionals, social workers, counselors, parents, and, yes, school board members who can help these 494 cross the commencement stage. The superintendent, Dr. Rivera, and the interim superintendent are in a position to allow employees in this building to spend two hours a week helping these 494 students graduate on time. Additionally, Superintendent Rivera, I propose, and interim superintendent Kayla, I propose that we reassign some of our nationally certified teachers to our most troubled schools. The Center for American Progress has noted that teacher quality is the most important factor in the success of a school. We have approximately, and Dr. Rivera perhaps can correct me on this, thirty-two or thirty-three nationally certified teachers. I think 27 of them are still employed in the district. Unfortunately, only one of these teachers is assigned to a school that's in trouble. This, too, is unacceptable and must change. By receiving national board certification, these 27 teachers have demonstrated the requisite knowledge, experience, skills, and commitment to help our children cross that commencement stage. Reassign those teachers and put them in the most troubled schools. There's a way to do that. If they won't do it voluntarily, offer them a significant financial incentive, not $1,500, but I propose if we're spending money in this district to the tune of $600 million, give those teachers, 27 teachers, an extra $10,000 to get them into our troubled schools. What that means to 494 dreams cannot be valued in a dollar and cents mode. Additionally, Superintendent Rivera and interim superintendent Kayla, we need to restore the positions in the budget that relate to, there are two positions in the budget, chief of standards and accountability and the managing director of student data. These positions were cut as a result of budgetary constraints. I will use the data at Franklin to suggest these positions need to be restored. Global Arts, once again, had forty-nine of its 64 students at risk of not graduating. How did that happen? How did we get to April of 2007 and 49 of your 64 students are at risk not graduating? That happened because someone wasn't minding the store. For four years, these students were allowed to pursue a track of failure because someone wasn't minding the store. Those positions that I identified, the chief of standards and accountability and the managing director of student data, will allow us to keep real-time assessment of where our students are at so that no longer will we say 75% of a class is at risk of not graduating in April of the year they're to graduate. Finally, Superintendent Rivera and interim superintendent Kayla, we have to think out of the box. If we don't think out of the box, we'll be locked in it forever. I hope and trust that you will implement this plan called 494 Dreams in 66 days, and you'll do it with immediate dispatch. Thank you.
I could just make a quick comment.
Superintendent Rivera?
Just a quick comment. Your suggestion that we move in this direction is actually something that my staff took to heart two or three weeks ago when you actually made such a suggestion. And so our chiefs who are out in the audience have met with principals. They've actually developed also a 10-point plan to attack this directly over the next several weeks to prepare our young people. So I think combining that with some of your suggestions, I'll be happy to sit down with interim superintendent Kayla and our staff to address some of this stuff immediately. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Commissioner White?
I just want to thank Mr. White or interim superintendent for actually coming up with a plan. So often, we hear what the problems are, we state them over and over again, but very rarely, someone say, "Here's, here's something that maybe we, maybe can work, is something that we can do." So I just want to thank you for that.
Anyone else? No? Good. Okay, then we'll move on to speakers on other than agenda items, and we have six speakers. The first is Reverend George Nicholas.
Thank you very much for allowing me this time this evening. I represent the Faith Community Alliance, a ministerium group that has a membership of many of the pastors and clergy here in the city of Rochester, and I would like to just read a prepared statement to you this evening. As a minister in the city of Rochester, I see firsthand the challenges that our children face in the public schools. I have the occasion to visit schools in my neighborhood, and I find many hard-working, committed people doing their best to function in a system that is not designed for success. More than a local pastor, I am also a parent with three children in this system, and I am not a passive parent, but my wife, who is a member of the school-based planning team at one of our children's schools, and I are active in the education of our sons. It pains me to say how greatly disappointed we are at the quality of education that has afforded our sons in this district. I am greatly disturbed by the low expectations and general acceptance of mediocrity in the schools. Failure is often expected, and reaching bare minimum standards is seen as some level of success. True, the majority of the children are African-American or Latino, but does that mean they cannot excel? True, many of these children are poor, but does that mean that their lack of family income should equate to their lack of academic success? True, far too many children come from fractured, single-parent homes filled with dysfunctional family dynamics, but does that mean that inappropriate antisocial behavior should be excused and tolerated? As a parent and a local pastor, I'm ashamed to see that we have schools on the national most dangerous schools list. I'm appalled that we would have schools shut down by the state because of underperformance. And I'm trying to understand why I see children coming home from school, listening to iPods, eating bags of potato chips, and not carrying home a backpack full of books and homework. If you were to come to my church and ask the children that are in our Christian education program who Jesus is, and only three out of 10 children could answer correctly, I could not blame the Sunday school teacher. I could not ridicule and malign the parents. I could not use the excuse of some perceived inherent deficiency in the child as an explanation of their failure. As the pastor and leader, I would have to take the responsibility for their lack of basic knowledge. I would, I would have to be accountable for their failure and question my approach to leadership and my commitment to their success. I would have to examine my methods and cease to operate as business as usual. As a leader, I would be forced to make radical organizational changes that would shake the very foundation of the institutional culture. I would have to make sacrifices and seek constructive critique from stakeholders in our church community in order to make sure that we have a Christian education program that was effective. In short, I would have to be a leader. Leadership is the thing that I most, that I see most lacking in this system. Bickering and mistrust, bickering and mistrust is a sign of weak organization and need of visionary leadership. It appears that some in the school board have failed to remember who their primary client is, the children. In addition, the majority shareholders are the parents, and we, the tax parents, the taxpaying parents in this district are the owners, and we need to be treated as such. We can no longer tolerate a system where elected representatives and appointed administrators operate autonomous of the desires of the community that provides the resources for their positions. It is time for radical education reform in Rochester. It is time for a complete overhaul of a broken system that has failed miserably to produce acceptable outcomes. The graduation rate is too low. The dropout rate is too high. The standardized test scores are below standard. The literacy rate is deficient. The schools and buses are not safe. It is time for a change. So today, we as community ministers, parents, grandparents, are committing to get in the game. We confess that we have not let our voices be heard, and our collective silence has contributed to the demise of the system, but from this day forward, that will change. We know that a strong school system must have strong, active parents. So we are committing to work with parents in our churches and neighborhoods to train them on how to be effective advocates for their children. We want to work with the system to make sure that all the children in Rochester have the same, no, better education than the children in Fairport, Penfield, and Grease and any other school district in Monroe County. It is our sincere hope that you will show leadership by sharing this same desire to work together for the betterment of our children. And we do have a plan that we want to share with you and submit to the clerk this evening. Thank you for your time.
I would certainly welcome you into the fold. We need, we need as much of the community involved in the education of our children as possible. We need people who are willing to do what is needed to do, not just criticize, but work to make things right. So we appreciate your new commitment to work in this area. The next speaker is Mr. Ron Ring. Reverend Willie Harvey.
Good evening. We are happy to be here tonight, and there are things that have taken place that I'm well pleased with, but I can look around and see that we still have a lot of work to do. And I feel like if we can do a little at a time and make a little amount of progress at a time, after a while, we'll be to the end of the rope like we would like, like to be. So what I'm, I'm saying that we have been working with the superintendent and also the, some of the board, and we appreciate what you have done, and we appreciate what you're going to do. And we appreciate what the superintendent has done, and, and we appreciate the things that he have opened up, that we would be able to understand some of the progress that are being made. Now, there have been a lot of time I have stood here and raised my voice and, and spoke to some of the things I know what were right in the district, but tonight, we had, I have one thing in common, and that, what I'm talking about tonight, have been fulfilled by our superintendent, and I'm glad that he did that. And so in the near future, as I said, we have a lot of work to do because there are a lot of people who are displeased, but yet, we're going to be able to do it a little at a time. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Harvey. Minister Clifford Florence?
Good evening. Parents now know this evening that this district is in corrective action. No parental notification of the district's slide in this continuum of accountability. This district is in need of improvement and now is in corrective action, even though the state requires every parent of every child in this district to have been notified as early as 2003 and 2005. Curriculum audit, which was discussed at a board meeting here on October 13, 2005, by the Quality Assurance Committee meeting here by the Board of Education. The district's slide to corrective action was under this current leadership, and yet the community at large was led to believe that our children were improving. Our special education services are in need of intervention. This is a state designation, and yet this community, the parents, the stakeholders, the taxpayers, have not been notified. Low performance. How can you change the down spiral of this district in corrective action by utilizing the same institutional knowledge that put us there? How can students' performance increase if the expectation is to get all the students to proficiency when some in this leadership says that it may take as long as 10 years to reach all of our students? How can we have a nationally recognized pre-K program that prepares our youngest learners for excellence, and yet they become declining high achievers when they hit the schools at K through six? Safety concerns. Wilson Commencement Foundation. The lack of parental notification concerning the fighting and the breach of security that goes on in the building and also spills into the streets of our community. The foundation, that is our children, instead of being in class to learn, our own lockdown because parents are not being notified that they are having problems in the schools. Students feeling unsafe instead of speaking to the adults in the building. They're taking class time. They're taking class time to call their parents to come into the school and to protect them. We reward failure. Administrators from search schools such as Frederick Douglass, that was a redesigned school, continue to show failure under the president administrator. That administrator was moved to another school that has national recognition, by the way, which is Wilson, which has 4,000 students between the two campuses. Current administrator at Wilson not having to participate in the interview process for the new administration position, as is common throughout our district, at such schools as 46 and School Number Two, to name a few. Parent involvement. Many parents in this district have been disenfranchised and marginalized, denying parents the option in the daily participation of their schools in supporting this district, in their individual schools, and supporting their children. There is not ample notification to many parents about the activities that have support that requires parents to have input. The lack of the Board of Education's resolution establishing a district-wide parent council, reinstating a parent negotiator, instead of having an advisory committee that advises the board. The lack of pure constituency. Presentation of parents. Inactive discussion that involves documents that require the support and activity of all parents. The support of school-based planning needs to be strengthened on the side of parents who receive very little support. As a board, are you all so comfortable that governing a district in corrective action whose special education services are so bad that they need intervention right now? Do you honestly believe that those who hold the institutional knowledge in our district have the mindset to change the horrendous graduation rate of less than 50% of our students? Will this same institutional knowledge decrease the dropout rate? And when will it really happen? Rewarding failure is something that we do common in this district. Instead of making our students and our parents taxpayers and stockholders first, has the opportunity for parental involvement been so diluted that this district has no place in making all parents real partners in this process? I want to challenge the new leadership, the present board that is here. We need to stop this down spiraling and raise the expectations that all children can learn. And tonight, the Faith Alliance wants to challenge all parents, grandparents, taxpayers, stakeholders. We all need to come together for the excellence of all of our children, and we need to do it starting tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Wallace Smith. Well, I guess that's it. Thank you. The next board meeting will be on May 17 at 6:30 p.m. And the Finance Committee of the whole will meet on April 24 and April 30. The Budget Adoption Meeting will be on May 10. And if you're interested in any more information about board meetings, please go to our website. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board's hereby adjourned.
I kind of wondered if I had it right.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Oh, no, it was Domingo.
Hi, how are you?
I'm a certified school-based education.
Now, therefore, we, Rochester City Council President Lawrence J. Geis, council members Benjamin L. Douglas and Toni M. Thompson, commend these and all the other winners of the Frederick Douglass Memorial Speech Arts Competition. Further, we thank them for helping to preserve this fine tradition. And this proclamation is being presented today to Dr. Pitts and the Friends of Frederick Douglass for their outstanding work in support of the youth of this community. At this time, we're going to have Vice President Thompson to please come forward, and she will continue the program at this time. Thank you so very much. And for, what's it, Riddell Freeman. Riddell, I'll tell you what I'm going to have to do. I'm going to have to come and see you because I like that Afro you got, my man.
Thank you, Dr. Ray, and congratulations, Dr. Pitts, a well-deserved honor. I'd like to ask the members of the Board of Education to come forward at this time, please, and position yourselves along the front of the room. We would like to take a few moments to recognize our young presenters tonight, and I would ask that you come forward in the order that your name is called. Would Sapphire Johnson please come forward? Her father says she had homework to do, so she had to leave us. Talk about having your priorities in order. And this certificate is an honorable mention award presented to Asanti Ship from Aquinas Institute High School, Frederick Douglass Memorial Speech Arts Competition in December 2001. You do us proud, Asanti. And if you would shake hands with each of the board members. Thank you. Janay Slade, I believe she could not join us. Ty Lynn Walker. Forgive me if I mangle this. As you can see, I'm also reading the names of the students who are absent this evening. Thank you. We're told that Mercedes' grandmother is in the hospital, which is why she's not with us this evening. From School Number 23. Neftali Morales from Jefferson Middle School. Laus Hester, John Marshall Regents Academy. Charmaine Speed from Franklin High School. Can we have another round of applause for the students, please? And thank you very much, students. You may be seated. We're going to ask the board members to remain up front. Just a moment, please. Thank you, Commissioner Porter. And we hope the families and the students can remain because we're going to be singing "Happy Birthday" to Frederick Douglass before the end of the program. We're at the point now where we would like to recognize our honorees for Black History Month. I'd like to ask Commissioner Robert Brown, Rob Brown, to come forward, please, for
I'd like to read a brief tribute to one of our honorees. It's Ms. Shirley Willis. When Shirley Willis' youngest daughter was four, her friends suggested she and her husband, Richard, enroll Kimberly in the Rochester City School District's Title I Preschool Program. Mrs. Willis also decided to volunteer in the program and shortly after was hired as a paraprofessional. In 1972, Dr. David Anderson asked her to participate in a new Title I Teacher and Training Initiative, and so began Shirley Willis' illustrious journey with the Rochester City School District. Her career included working in the preschool programs at School Number Six and Number Nineteen, running the Title I Math Lab at School Number Fifteen, classroom teaching at Schools Number Thirty-four and Seventeen, and her favorite assignment, teaching third grade at School Number Twenty-eight. In her spare time, she earned her Associate's Degree from MCC, her Bachelor's Degree from Nazareth College, and her Master's Degree from SUNY Brockport. In 1991, she was asked by Mr. Woodrow Hammond to assist in planning the grand opening of the district's new Title I Parents Center, an assignment that was supposed to last a month. The grand opening in January 1992 was a success, but there were now programs to be planned and implemented. Mrs. Willis remained. Her dedication and passion for working with students and parents brought forth programs such as before and after-school tutoring, the Parents Roundtable, computer classes, grief counseling, sewing and aerobatics, aerobics classes, arts and crafts, and many others. Mrs. Willis also coordinated the Parents Center's Black History Month Celebration and Multicultural Program. The successful annual event brought in such notable speakers as Michael Wynn and Reverend Troy Bronner, as well as a range of multicultural performers and delectable foods for the families of our community to enjoy. A member of the Black Educators Association of Rochester, Mrs. Willis served on the district's Homework help team, mentor roundtable, and grief resource network. She's also a longtime member of Zion Hill Missionary Baptist Church. In recognition of her years of service and dedication to the Rochester City School District, the Board of Education is proud to present Shirley Willis with its 2002 Black History Month Award. Is she here? Oh, yes. Please. I didn't see you over there. Don't be shy. Thank you. Thank you so, so much. Would you like to speak?
Dr. Janey, commissioners, special nod to Commissioner Porter, and to my family and friends who, as usual, are here to support me. I would like to say that being recognized for your contribution is always a great honor. But to be recognized during Black History Month and on the same program with Wilbur Girst and Dr. Anderson and these very talented children, it is an honor that is so overwhelming I'm at a complete loss of words. So all I can say is, from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Good evening. It is my honor, my privilege, it is with great pride tonight that I read this tribute to a man who, in my opinion, is deserving of far more than this tribute. He is not only a longtime member and stalwart of this community and of this school district, but he has also shown himself as a bridge builder, as an activist, as a thinker, as a person who loves people and takes great pride in the next generation. So it is, again, with great pride that I read this tribute by the Rochester Board of Education to Wilbur Girst on this day, February 26, 2002. In November 1992, after 32 years of service, Mr. Wilbur Girst retired from the Rochester City School District. That was nearly 10 years ago. Yet his contributions and service to the district remain important and notable to this day. Formerly a supervisor with the City of Rochester Recreation Department, Mr. Girst began working for the City School District in 1960, serving as a special education teacher, director of the Community Education Center, director of Title I Programs, and chief labor negotiator. At the time of his retirement, he was supervising director of Labor Relations and Affirmative Action. Mr. Girst received his Master's Degree in Urban Education from the University of Rochester as part of an initiative of the Project Unique. This was one of the first major attempts by the district to bring innovation to Rochester schools. His educational pursuits also included studies at Syracuse University, SUNY Brockport, Rochester Business Institute, and Hampton University, from which he received his Bachelor's Degree. A native of Williamsburg, Virginia, Mr. Girst moved to Rochester in 1955 with his wife, Doris. He served in the United States Army as a First Lieutenant for two years during the Korean War. He is the father of three and the grandfather of one, all of whom consider him a true role model for his family and his community. Mr. Girst has been involved in many professional organizations. Mr. Girst has been involved in many professional organizations. In 1970, he became the first African-American president of the Rochester Teachers Association. He was an active member of the National Education Association, the American Foundation for Negro Affairs, the Council of Exceptional Children, the New York State Teachers Association, and was the founder of the National Association of State and Federal Administrators. He was also a health advocate who worked diligently on sickle cell anemia awareness with Naomi Chamberlain at the University of Rochester, and on public awareness of prostate cancer. His social affiliations are with the Harambe Social Club and Omega Psi Phi Fraternity. Holy applause, please. Mr. Girst is an active member of Mount Olivet Baptist Church. Now you can clap. He sings in both the men's chorus and senior choir, and was instrumental in the development of the church's sound system, an elaborate sound system, I might add, that includes computerized audio and video equipment. He has also had an interest in talent in creative arts, particularly music. He is a wonderful pianist and photographer, and I add videographer. He has utilized these skills in raising his family, in teaching children, and now in his retirement. For his many years of service to education in Rochester, the Board of Education is proud to present Mr. Wilbur Girst with this special recognition in honor of Black History Month.
Dr. Cook. Dr. Janey. Distinguished commissioners. To me, this is a privilege and indeed an honor. To receive an award of such magnitude from you for the services I hope I completed with some success, I indeed appreciate it. And to the parents and staff and the workers of the City School District, I appreciate all of those unselfish times you spent with me to make my tenure a success and enjoyable. May God bless you all. Thank you.